All right, good morning. Let's call this Rankin County Board of Supervisors meeting February 5th, 2018 to order. We'd like to start this meeting with an invocation from our board attorney, Mr. Schley, if you don't mind.
My turn.
Thank you.
I'd like to say thank you so much for the day that you've given us. And we don't want to take for granted the fact that you've actually given us this day. You've allowed us an opportunity to come and serve our fellow man here in this place. Lord, thank you that we have these gentlemen here today who have sacrificed and who have made a commitment to this community. I pray for their wisdom and for their discernment today. Help them to be sharp and on their toes today, Lord, to make good decisions that benefit the entire community. Thank you, Lord, for those who protect us and keep us safe. Lord, we owe so much to them. And I pray, Father, that you will keep them safe and safe with their names and Christ in their name.
Great, thank you, Mr. Schley. Item three, public comments and recognition. I don't believe we have any public comments out there right now. So we'll move into item four, old business. Minutes' approval by...
Second.
We've got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison for minutes' approval. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item four passes. Item five, on the consent agenda. Got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item six is Ms. Fortenberry, and I don't see her. Ms. Lawrie, do you want to handle hers?
I will do that. A request to void 2017 tax sale and refund any tax sale purchasers for PIN number 38248 due to a posting error.
Motion approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item six passes. Mr. Sullivan, good morning for item seven.
Tough morning, tough morning.
No question about it.
Petition changed assessment on 2017 real and personal property assessment.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item seven passes. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Item eight, Mr. Harrison, good morning.
Morning, how are you?
Good.
Motion approved, roadwork accomplished.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Morrison to...
As scheduled, yes.
To approve item A, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item A passes. So we've got a motion by Mr. Morrow under item B to pay energy. Second by myself. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. Item B passes. Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Excellent job this morning.
Thank you.
Mr. Schley, you seen how this is all gone this morning? They've set a pretty good pace for you right there.
In advance, let me just apologize for the fact that it's about to start looking like coal molasses around here on my section.
Well, good morning.
Good morning, guys.
It's all of you.
If we may, Mr. Morrow, give me that motion for A and B together for public hearings.
Okay, so we've got a motion by Mr. Morrow to set both public hearings under items A and B. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed with a like sign. You're off to a good start, Mr. Schley.
Yes.
Item C, public hearings.
Item C is the continuation of the public hearing on the R. Creighton-Luckett Jr. rezoning request. It's Highway 25, District 4 parcel. We'll open that public hearing again. R. Creighton-Luckett Jr. is seeking to rezone 19.33 acres of a 50-acre parcel from RE1 to C2. The property is located on Highway 25, just south of Stoll Road. The adjoining property to the north is zoned C2. The application does not identify a specific commercial use. The applicant owns a total of 380 acres. The remainder of the 50-acre parcel, combined with the other acreage, the other 380, is going to be developed into a residential subdivision. The preliminary plot has been approved. The developer stated the minimum square footage of homes in the subdivision will be 2,500 and up. So that hearing is now reopened. I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the R. Creighton-Luckett Jr. rezoning request. Opposition? Yes, if you'll please come forward. If you will, sir, state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Norman Singleton, and I live at 120, 110 Creek Drive. And I don't want to be in opposition, but what I'd like to know is, I own property on 25 and across the street where they're going to do this development. And I'd just like to know what are they going to put up? Because I have a vested interest in this, whatever they're going to develop there.
Sure.
You know, I understand, they're saying they're going to build some homes, but I don't know what this zone, C2, what they're going to put there. So I'd like to know that.
Sure, thank you.
Is there anyone else to speak in opposition while we have full of our opposition? Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
That's a legitimate question.
Kelly, you're pregnant, you want, y'all want to come on and get ready?
My name is Rachel Bennett, and I live at 160 Creek Drive across the street. And I also would like to know what this C will be.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Any who want to come forward? I assume y'all are in support of it?
Yes. Hello, everybody, thank you.
Good morning.
First of all, this morning, I brought a few renderings to show you guys or anyone in the audience that wants to see it. Some of the houses there are built in Dogwood Trace, large homes in the subdivision. The houses will average $400,000 to $540,000 homes. We really looked at it and worked and tried to come up with a good master development plan. There is nothing specific to go in there, but we would like the C2 zoning. So anything that falls under C2, that's what I would assume that would go there.
Kelly, would you kind of add a little, ablib, a little bit around that C2 area? Kind of your plan, your residential side, just to remind everybody on the record here, kind of what goes around it? You've got the residential development coming in behind the C2 proposed zoning.
Correct.
If you can kind of talk about the overall focus of everything, if you don't mind.
I think this same question actually came up before, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
They just run on some type of answer.
Well, send up one idea. I mean, I would just be brainstorming to think what it would be, but nicely built office warehouse, nothing kept outside. There seems to be a big need for that in Flowood Market. We're not interested in any, like, gas stations or retail or truck stops. I've heard a lot of that in the discussions before. One of my partners is Creighton-Luckett, the other partner is Lee Lampton back there. We've all done commercial developments that I think that are very, I don't know, classy, if the right word. I mean, we're going to build $500,000 homes. I think it's around 92 of them, right? You're going to drive right past whatever commercial that goes in there. And that's, 92 homes is going to take us four or five years. So we're not, we don't want anything second-class coming in on the commercial.
Well, and if, correct me if I'm wrong, but anything you're going to put there still has got to come before the board anyway.
Yes, sir.
So, and I'm saying this for the, so they can hear that.
If it automatically meets a C2 requirement...
Yeah, they don't want to come back.
They don't have to come before the boards. They don't have to get their permits, and they'll have to show site plans, and they'll have to...
Thus I said, but it'll have to have a site plan, so we'll know what's going there. And they'll have their opportunity to know.
Site plan, architectural review.
Huh?
It's legal.
If it falls inside that C2, they can put...
The site plan and the architectural review will go through community development.
Right.
At least your supervisor for the district, Mr. Gaines...
Right.
Would be contacted about the site plan, the architectural review. But there would not necessarily be a board-level review of that particular use so long as it qualifies automatically under C2.
That's correct, but he's still going to have to approve what's approved, allow...
Yeah, I'm assuming that the...
Cosmetically, not the type of building.
That's what I'm saying. I know.
That is how I suggested that he would be involved in that process even four or five years down the road. Can you, can you walk us through some of the allowed uses under C2s, so we get some idea?
Okay, so it says anything allowed in the P1 district, which would be office-type buildings. Those are professional-type buildings. It's a retail area, commercial uses in which services performed and merchandise offered for sale is conducted or displayed within closed structures. You could have a shopping center located on a minimum site of three acres. It lists veterinary clinics, pet shops, and then some of the other things we've seen is daycares, things like that.
Commercial uses where all of the activity is within an enclosed, an enclosed structure is sort of a C2 delineation.
So daycare is a C2? That's outside stores, those kids, isn't it?
And one thing, Kelly, I guess also to expand on, that is C2 around you, up and down 25. So this is a...
Exactly, that's a good point. One of the reasons when we first looked at it, MDOT regulates 25, and that's where the median cuts are, where you can go in and out. So the next one up is at Stoll Road. So that's when we came, you know, they didn't come in on that cut, and we did a traffic impact study. Then come in on that road, and then come through what we're proposing to rezone, tie into the other rezoning, come out on Stoll Road, which should help traffic flow. That ultimately gives the neighborhood somewhat of a second out eventually when that's tied in. So it makes, it does make for a good corner up there on Stoll Road and from the median cut that MDOT has.
So, all right, thank you.
Creighton, you want to add anything?
Just wanted to, just add, actually, that was what I was going to tell you, is we're really just asking to be consistent with what we believe is already out there. We do think there's a, you know, substantial change growing throughout that area, and we feel like there is a public need for it. So just asking for the, to be consistent with what's around us.
Okay.
Did you guys want to, did you guys want to see any of these houses that are going in the back or anything?
I know you do a good job.
I got a question I've got. Are y'all still going to do something immediately, Kelly? I mean, these like next 12, 18 months along with the construction of the house?
Only, only a gay one came in with a super good, clean, good-looking project. But now to me, our focus right now is the residential, which we hope to have a shovel in the ground, I mean, clean and wet.
I guess my other question would be after that is, what is the specific need or rush to get this zone commercial? If, if the area already out there is commercial, and all likelihood it is continuing to move forward, the board typically likes to know exactly, kind of more specific need as opposed to specific projects, so everybody can kind of be on board with that, as opposed to being a speculative, which is what you're asking us to do?
Correct. You're familiar with the, the only, I've been approached one time, because I haven't talked about the rezoning. We have it marketed. We didn't want to put it out there, you know, until we had it. But I did have one person approach to do climate-controlled storage that would back up to the residential part, and we would leave a buffer of trees between the residential and the, but it's someone, and I can't say their name, but it's someone very reputable here. They've, they've done one before and sold it in the city limits of Flowood. Very reputable people. That's the only thing that we've had. And I think it would be, I don't think that would be bad, but all, everything would have to be fully enclosed inside. I think it falls under the C2 category, if you will.
And I think Mr. Gaines can take care of the architectural need on that particular asset. I mean, you know, that's what Flowood's doing, I know. They've dressed up something like that to make it, you know, very appealing into the market. So I, you know, I'm just trying to make sure we address the people living out there, their desires to have an input. And when we do it speculative, we just kind of open it up to whatever, you know, whatever is there in the zoning classification. And y'all may package this thing together, get sick, whatever, and put it off to another developer, and we don't have the same assurances that from that developer that, I know, y'all are going to live up, and you're going to hold to what you say you're going to do. That's a little concern of mine, is that, you know, if something happened out there and y'all moved this development to somebody else, and then we're kind of, they already got their zoning in place, and, you know, they have no connection here with our board, you know, to actually do what they, what y'all intended to do.
But Bob, if it's C2, they can only put in C2-type businesses. And we have control of architect review, so...
That's all you got, though.
We're going to be over what structure they put there, meaning they ain't going to put up a 10 shack.
No, but they could put up, they could go back with a gas station.
We'll make them brick it. No, they can't.
Gas station, no allowed in C2.
It would be a conditional use of the C2 if they wanted to do a gas station.
You would have to approve that.
I mean, I'm kind of like, Bob, why, why do you need it zoned particularly for you to, the housing? I mean, why, I mean, I really, I guess that's, I kind of agree. Why, what's the hurry to have that zone?
Well, kind of, we would like to market it as C2 and try to get the commercial district going out there. It would eventually support the neighborhood, but I would say in the next 12 months, we're trying to get the subdivision going and get houses in there. As you guys know, from the time you take a commercial project from concept in your mind to implementing and put the proverbial shovel in the ground can take two years. So the fact that, that's why we want to go ahead and do this now, market it, someone may come along and put a 12-month contract on the property. It just takes such a long time to try to get it going. And if anything else, like, we've actually considered, the Lampton family's done several commercial developments around here. That's one of the partners. Creighton's a partner, I'm a partner.
Right.
We hope we're not, not all three of us are going to be run over by the proverbial train. But we take it as a very serious investment, and that's why I can't emphasize, if we're putting 90, that's $45 million worth of houses behind it. We don't want a chicken coop. We don't want a cheap 10-shed barbecue. We want something first-class. Like, we may would even consider putting our office out there, you know, and put an office warehouse, because it's kind of in the center of your district and your district. And that's where I do a lot of work.
No, these are just questions I felt like need to be answered. I feel like they're probably asking, I mean, I...
Yes, sir.
Mr. Gaines, I'm good with it.
Kelly, are y'all all involved in the residential side too, or just the...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
All right.
Before we close the hearing, is there anyone else to speak on this matter, for or against otherwise? Anyone else? Hey, guys, if I may, we will close that public hearing. Before you make your decision, I want to point out a couple of things you've already heard. Typically, in a rezoning request, you demonstrate some sort of material change in the circumstances of the area that would justify. This particular piece of property is directly adjacent to highway commercial frontage. It's right on Highway 25 and fronts on 25. That clearly indicates that it ought to be highway commercial. Our highway commercial classifications are even stronger than the request that's being asked for. Typically, you would see a C3 in that setting. This is a C2, which means it's more restrictive on the commercial use, more protective of the properties around it. So I think it's an appropriate request, and it's appropriate classification, in as much as it could be even less restrictive and still meet the definition. So you've got the material change that justifies the rezoning request. The second thing is that there is a need for it. And so where you've got highway commercial and you've got a pathway of growth going in that northeast direction, what you find is that there is a demonstrated need. In my opinion, as counsel for the board, I do see a demonstrated need for additional commercial frontage up 25. It is the main corridor of growth in the northeast quadrant of the county. And so I believe that the board would be justified if it chooses to do so in rezoning it to C2, with the understanding that it's a less restricted use than what could be there.
Okay.
Now, it would be appropriate to take action.
That hearing is closed.
I move to approve it.
All right, so we've got a motion by Mr. Gaines.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed with a like sign? Motion passes. Item, I think I'm on item D.
Item D. Yes, sir. Continuation of the public hearing for amendments to the Rankin County land use map and the official zoning map. This is a continuation, and so we're going to reopen that public hearing. I'm going to ask, Dave, do you mind coming forward? Ms. Gray, do you mind coming forward if you're, just in case? Dave and Gray with CNPD have been very helpful in our looking at and addressing what has become a problem we didn't know we had until we had some, some outside agencies indicate to us that we may have a little bit of a problem. When we adopted zoning back in 2004, and there was the initiation of zoning across the county, what you, what you find is, in specific areas of the county, especially along major highway roadways, what you have is a stretch along the roadways that was labeled as commercial. And that's done because, as we just got out of this hearing a few seconds ago on Highway 25, we find that properties that are immediately adjacent, adjacent to major highway frontage are commercial in nature. They're going to be commercial uses. And so there was this application of our zoning, sort of whole cloth, in 2004. What's happened is that many of the properties that were classified as commercial, when zoning was adopted, actually didn't actually have on them residential uses. And they haven't changed to commercial. Folks are still living in those houses. What we found was that from time to time, you would have perhaps a house that burned or was destroyed in a weather event. When those individuals sought to go back and rebuild, they discovered that they couldn't rebuild because their property was now zoned commercial. When people get ready to sell a house, and it's in a commercial zone, even though it's a residential use, the buyer who would buy that property, if they go and secure a loan for it, or attempt to secure a loan, when the lender finds out that it's commercial, they are probably not going to loan them the money. And it's because it doesn't meet zoning. So the effort has been made to look around the county for places where we have this residential use classified as commercial, and we were looking to see, are there ways we can adjust some of that so that we don't end up in situations where people can't either replace a house that's been destroyed or sell a house that they want to sell? That's the whole effort behind this. So what you see before you are the maps as they exist now, and we're focusing on the Star community. The Star community is where we found the vast majority of these instances of a disparate use of property versus the zoning that was overlaid on it. And so we came up with an alternate zoning map. We've gone through that process. To Jared's credit, he's had at least two meetings that I know of, public meetings down in Star, to give the folks an opportunity to look at this, to hear about it, to understand what's being done. And so we have tried to massage some things, to address some specific concerns. And that's what this hearing is about now, to see if we can get to a point of resolution, or do we need to keep massaging. So the hearing is now reopened. Dave, Gray, do y'all have anything to add to what I just said there?
I wasn't able to attend the second public hearing at Star, but my understanding is there may be some additional parcels that y'all would want to consider. If that's the case, then, you know, these were advertised prior to, you know, 15 days prior to the initial hearing. If there are additional parcels, I would just suggest that maybe we re-advertise and either hold an additional hearing or continue this one, whichever you feel like.
Everybody understand what we're talking about now? We, at the, I think at the second meeting, Jared, I was not able to attend, and I apologize for that in advance, that there were individuals who made specific requests about their parcels, that they wanted to either be stay commercial or go to residential.
Correct.
And so we may have some more movement.
We do, we do have some, a few more changes. Renee, and I talked about it, in fact, it's just like what you said, Dave, we're, it's going to have to, we need to, we need to get together and look at it, and then this will have time to advertise it. So I hate to keep delaying it, but this is really important. In fact, this is the biggest area affected in the whole county. And so I think we got it all worked out this time, for sure. Well, we have. We, this, we had the two meetings and had a good turnout. We got, I think, narrowed it all down.
Mr. President, if I may, just suggest sort of where we are, and then get some direction from the board. It seems clear to me that Jared's proposal would be that we stop here, that Renee goes through the process again to re-advertise, to get specific notices out to properties that were not going to change previously but now are. So we make sure we get good notice and don't run afoul of our notice requirements. And so my suggestion would be, we're not likely to have any action on adopting these changes today. We're likely to continue that.
Right.
Is that right, Mr. Morrow?
Right.
And in that regard, there wouldn't, since there's not going to be any action, I don't know that there would be any need to receive any additional comments now. But I don't want to cut anybody off that is here today that wants to comment. So taking some direction from the board. Do you want to hear from folks, or...
Personally, if somebody's made the trip down here...
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping everybody's here.
I'd be definitely open to hear any kind of comments.
Let me open the floor. The hearing is open on this. Is there anyone here to speak on the matter of the rezoning request?
There might not be.
On the eventual map?
No, but I don't think...
Is there anyone here to speak on that?
Okay. All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Mike Arthur, 182 Mandarin Drive. I live across the road from the Fanning Boat Landing, just to deal with the Star, but it's in that same change.
Right.
They're looking to rezone from residential to commercial. And I don't know if y'all have any effect on that with it being on a spillway property, but really don't want to see a bar and restaurant in the middle of a residential area.
Sure. That's across from Marblehead.
Yes.
In that area, over there, next to Arbor Landing is what you're talking about.
Yes.
Dave, you want to talk to me about that area?
Sure.
Hey, look, thanks for coming in for your comments. We'll try to address it a little further right here.
Yeah, as we were going through the process of identifying these parcels we talked about, we did look countywide, and we did find a discrepancy between the county land use plan and the county zoning, as opposed to what PRV had shown on their land use plan. And I think, as you well know, we try to coordinate everything we do with PRV, since they ultimately have controlling authority as to what is developed there. I think they've been real good to work with the county to make sure what they want to do meshes with the county zoning, but that was a merely attempt to just match up what PRV had already planned.
All right, so the area he's talking about, just for clarity for everybody, is the area he's talking about is, was already zoned commercial through PRV? Is that correct?
Right, for the PRV...
So we're just trying to match up what their property is listed as?
Exactly.
Okay. Does that, does that make sense?
Yeah.
What we're saying? So PRV already had that set up there. We're just trying to clean it up to match their document. So even if, even if we went against it, it's still zoned, Dave, and it's still going to stay zoned commercial, even if we didn't clean up our side of it?
Right. Like I say, ultimately, they have lease authority, so we're just trying to match what they have.
Match what they have. So it was already ahead of us, so, all right. And then thank you for your comments on that.
Just so the record is clear, the PRV does not have zoning authority, but they have lease control authority.
Right.
And so they have identified those parcels there as commercial parcels, and they intend to lease those to commercial uses. And since they are a state agency and have plenary authority over that property that belongs to the state, they can do that even if our zoning ordinance says that's residential. Okay? So it's, it's one of those trick bags that we, we try to play pretty and get along with each other, but when they make a decision about how they're going to utilize their property, the county zoning does not trump that.
Correct.
Okay? So is there anyone else to speak on the zoning? Mr. President, I believe there's no one else to speak, so we'll close the hearing on that. Mr. Morrison, it would be appropriate here to ask to, to continue the hearing and to ask our community development office to make the official notifications and reset this ask our community development office to make the official notifications and reset this hearing for an appropriate date.
I make that motion to do that. I think we need to, it'll give us time. I think we're in a good place now, and get it all cleaned up.
All right. So, motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item E, Mr. Slay.
Yes, item E is a public hearing on the Robert Kelly Conditional Use Permit, 244 Hickory Ridge Road, District One. We'll open that public hearing. Mr. Kelly is seeking a conditional use permit to surface mine five acres on Hickory Ridge Road for construction of a pond. The pond will be located on two parcels that total 26 acres. This property is zoned RE1A. A copy of the certificate of permit coverage from DEQ is included in the application. So, this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Robert Kelly Conditional Use Permit? Anyone to speak in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Okay, I think there was some, well, now you have some.
I'm sorry.
There you go.
Some proposed conditions, since this is a conditional use permit, would be the hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. on Monday through Saturday, no mining operation at night or on Sundays. The county will do an annual review of the mine after the first year to determine if the mine can continue per the conditional use that is being allowed. The county engineer will conduct that review. County will inspect Hickory Ridge Road to Florence Byram Road before mining to determine the condition of the roadway, and may possibly require a haul bond on this road. The haul route will be north on Hickory Ridge Road to Florence Byram Road, and west only on Florence Byram Road. The next will be gravel or slag. The developer will be required to gravel or slag the haul road, so that there's a reduction in dust or mud on the roadway. The developer must control the dust and mud that gets onto Hickory Ridge Road, and the developer must place a sign on Hickory Ridge Road for all the trucks that are entering the roadway. Those would be, those are seven conditions, Jared, and those would be made applicable to the condition.
Mr. Kelly is here. Would you like, I mean, have any comment on any of those, or anything there? Rob?
The only thing I speak to.
Come, come forth, you would. Just state your name and address.
Robert Kelly, 244 Hickory Ridge Road. Thank y'all for meeting with me today. That is four acres, it's not five.
Oh, it's four?
Four acres. Yep.
Okay.
It was five with the haul road, did you?
Pardon?
The application said it was five, including the haul road.
Well, it could be five with the, with the road.
Okay.
That's what it said.
But you're okay with the conditions that were stated?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, there, okay, that was all you had, was that? You're okay with?
I'm, I'm okay. I'm okay with that.
All right, good.
Thank you.
And I like that, I will say, this comes out right beside his house, so I'm sure he was, gonna be a little self-conscious about some dust.
Yeah, I'm very conscious about it. Not my problem.
Very sensitive, yeah. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Well, with that being said, and he's accepted those conditions, I make a motion to approve.
We're gonna close the hearing?
Yeah, we'll close that public hearing, and Jared's got a motion now to approve.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrison to approve, second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the white sign. So, item E passes. Item F, Mr. Slay.
Yes, this is the public hearing on the R and M Land and Timber Conditional Use Permit, Monterey Road, District One. We'll open that public hearing. R and M Land and Timber is seeking a conditional use permit to surface mine 47 acres on Monterey Road. They estimate the mine will be active for six years. They will enter and exit the mine from Highway 469. They are in the process of submitting the surface mining permit application to DEQ. This is a 73.38 acre parcel, it's zoned A1. This time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the R and M Land and Timber Conditional Use Permit? Anyone to speak in opposition?
Craig.
Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition on that matter. This time, we will introduce, if we may, proposed conditions on that parcel for conditional use purposes. Number one, the hours of operation are 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, no mining operations at night or on Sundays. Like the one before, the county will do an annual review after the first year to determine if the mine can continue, and the county engineer will make that determination. There'll be a haul route, it's from the pit entrance to travel Monterey Road to Highway 469.
No.
That's been changed.
That's what it changed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
They're gonna come out on 469, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
They're coming out on 469.
Okay. Are we still going east on Monterey only?
We're not on Monterey at all.
Not on Monterey at all. We're only on 469.
They're coming out, entering, going in and out on 469.
Make that change here in my notes. Got it?
That's not off, or you trip up a lawyer.
Craig, also, the other part about the shoulder and all, that can come off.
Okay.
About the what? Yeah, right.
All right. Just throw something at me when I get to that point, okay? Let me go to the next one. The county will inspect, no, we're not gonna inspect that one, are we? Because we're not on Monterey Road. Remove the trees from the, no, we're not gonna remove the trees from right away, because we're not on Monterey Road. Okay, let me see what else is left here. We would require signage at the entrance to the, to the pit for our trucks that are entering the roadway on both sides of the entrance and exit there. We'll gravel or slag the haul road to reduce the dust and mud. We're gonna keep a water truck on the haul road to reduce the dust. And we, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's it. That's it.
Mr. Butler and his partner here, do you have any, anything you'd like to add to that, or are you okay with those?
For y'all's information, we're only mining 46 of the 73 acres, and from Monterey Road, you may be able to see some equipment, but I mean, it's, it's quarter mile away from Monterey Road.
Yeah.
And behind trees from 469.
Yeah. I, I want, I want to say, I appreciate you working out the deal with 469, because that's why you don't have a room of people. I have had numerous calls, and then after I found out, and I think so is Renee's office, but I've had them personally, and that was all their concerns, was Monterey Road, Monterey Road, the hill, the traffic there. I mean, it was all that, and the dust. And anyway, all these things, but then after that, I went and called, made calls back, and told them that you had worked this out, and you were coming out there, and they said, well, that's great, that's the reason no one's here.
Well, and I wish I could tell them, to your credit, you said don't come back without an easement to Monterey, to 469.
Well, and you know, that was their big, when they saw that, that was their major concern, and ours too, and yours too, because it's, it's hard to make a turn out of Monterey on 469. Well, thanks to state not working with us. But anyway, I appreciate that, and that's, that's where you don't have people here. So, thank y'all.
All right. So, if there's, is there, is there anyone at all else to speak on this matter? Okay, I think we're good there, we can go ahead and close that public hearing. Jared, be appropriate, take action.
I make a motion to approve, and I think, I believe that covered everything. The dust, and I understand you got a truck, and the dust was an issue, but like you're saying, it's not as close as people pictured. But the dust and the, the road, trying to keep that road clean, because your idea of keeping it clean, and the people's, the travelers' idea, sometimes do different things, so do, do need to watch that. So, cut down on my phone calls. So, I made a motion.
Yeah, so, motion by Mr. Morrison, second by Mr. Morrow. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the white sign. Item F passes. Item G, Mr. Slay.
Item G is a public hearing that we'll open now on Green Diamonds LLC. This is a dimensional variance request at 439 Greenfield Ridge, this District Three. Greenfield Diamonds LLC is seeking a dimensional variance of 2.7 feet from the side setback on Lot 70 of Greenfield Ridge, Part 1D, which is also 439 Greenfield Ridge Circle. The property is zoned R1D. R1D require, requires a side setback of five feet, but with a minimum distance between dwelling units on adjoining lots of 15 feet. The southwest corner of the house on this Lot 70 encroaches by 2.7 feet into the 15-foot dimensional distance that is required between dwelling units. So, they're asking for a 2.7-foot variance. At this time, I'll ask if there is anyone here to speak in opposition to the Green Diamonds LLC Dimensional Variance Request? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to, to speak in opposition to this request, so we'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to take action.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow to approve.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item G passes. Couple items under other, Mr. Slay.
First is, item H is bid opening for the real property of, of a parcel of property that the board has declared to be surplus, that is situated in the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter, southeast quarter, southwest quarter, Section 22, Township 3 North, Range 5 East. This is in the town of Puckett, it's a piece of property the county formally owned.
Is it a town, or is it sort of village?
What, I call it town. I think it's a village, technically.
It is.
But they call themselves town.
I was curious, I really was, I said, I know there's a population base that changes the name, I didn't think they'd hit, hit it yet.
I don't think so.
They're getting there.
They're working on it.
One, one sore head at a time.
Yes, sir. That's right. So, we got, we have one bid for this surplus property, it's .11 acres, a very small, a little fragment of property here. So, I'm gonna go ahead and open the bid, see what we got here. This bid has come from Mr. Frederick H. Patrick. It's a bid for $1,650 for .11 acres, this surplus property. So, how it's brought up?
I think our bid minimum was 1,600, we put it there.
That's correct, yes, sir.
I make a motion to take it and accept it, and move on with it.
All right, so, a motion by Mr. Morrow to accept, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white signs. Item H passes. Item A.
Yes, sir. Item A is simply an acknowledgement and receipt of a petition to expand our Lake Harbor Fire Protection District. It's been executed by 50 individuals within the area this proposed to be annexed. This is obviously, this, for the purpose of this, is to, is to formally adopt and expand the district, so that the house tops that are within the proximity of the Lake Harbor Fire Protection District will be eligible for that level of fire protection that would help them on their home insurance. So, this is a process we do routinely. The first step in the process is to acknowledge, receive the petition, and direct that to your circuit clerk to verify that the signatures are qualified electors within the district.
Okay. You need a motion?
All it is, is a motion, a motion to, to acknowledge and receive, and send it to the circuit clerk.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All right, so, motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item A passes.
My hope would be that at the next board meeting, the circuit clerk's reported back, and then we can go ahead and set a public hearing on expansion of the district and move forward.
Item J.
Item J is the, first, we need to open a public hearing on our consideration and potential action to adopt a resolution approving and adopting the implementation of the tax increment financing for the Flowood Town Center project. So, we'll open that public hearing. I will ask if there is anyone here to speak on the matter of the adoption of a resolution approving the Flowood Town Center TIF project. Anyone here to speak on that matter? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak on the adoption of a resolution implementing the tax increment, increment financing plan for the Flowood Town Center project. We'll close that public hearing. At this time, it'd be appropriate to act on that particular matter.
Motion to approve. Before we make that motion. I think one of our conditions was the Flowood, City of Flowood adopted at their meeting, we assumed they did.
Yes, sir.
The city set its public hearing for this evening, and we expect, we will be there this evening, and we expect, I think, we'll have a conference.
So, we're gonna make another condition to ours, to subject to that, too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And I do want to go ahead and say that, on the record, as much as I'm opposed to giving them $5 million for their convention center, I'm always happy to help them with their tax incremental financing plans, so.
Okay.
Go ahead, Mr. Bishop.
I make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve of Mr. Bishop.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gaines. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Contingent upon the Flowood's approval tonight.
Correct, tonight, yes. Is that what it was?
Yes.
See, good?
Good.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item J passes. Item K.
Yes, sir. This is an unimproved piece of property that the school district has title to, that they are making available to our EOC for purposes of overland search and rescue training for our EOC guys. So, this is simply an agreement, a use agreement for that piece of property. I've already reviewed the agreement, everything looks okay to me. We just need authority for our EOC director to execute the agreement, so he has access to this property.
All right.
So, move.
All right, got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item K passes. Thank you, Mr. Slay. You did well.
Miss Oster.
All right, Ms. Oster. Item 10.
Thank you. The first two items I have this morning are both on the Rankin County Courthouse facility. A is approval of the pay application number six to Chris Albritton Construction Company in the amount of $558,882.92, and authority to issue that check.
So, move.
All right. Mr. Morrow, you taking items A and B together?
Please, if you don't mind.
Okay. Items A and B together, Jay?
Second.
All right, so, got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. So, item C, Ms. Oster.
Authority to reissue a poll worker, J.C., Joe C. Parkerson, for November 2012, June 2014, July 14, and November 14 for elections. These checks were not cashed, they were cleared as an outstanding check. She tried to cash them again, we have proof that she did not use these checks, they went back into the general county funds, so.
So, move.
Second.
Got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item C passes. Item D, Ms. Oster.
Accept Trustmark Bank for the lease purchase agreement of six 2018 Western Star tandem dump trucks at an interest rate of 2.49% for 36 months.
So, move.
Motion by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item D passes. Item E, Ms. Oster.
Authority to purchase three 2015 Ford Police Interceptor Utility from the Missouri Highway Patrol for the Sheriff's Department, from their FY18 budget, in a total amount of $55,900, and deputies McAlpin, Lord, Whittington, and Weaver to travel and pick up the vehicles.
So, move.
Second.
And a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, with the white sign. Item E passes. Item F.
Authority for Butler Snow to file our continuing disclosure statement for FY17 in the amount of $3,000.
What is some bonds for the everything?
Yeah.
Are they also doing?
He's got three zeros after.
What's that? Well, this, every year that this continuing disclosure, it has a lot of information that has to happen, and it, part of it is our bonds, some of it is our assessed values, our miller.
I mean, I know all the courts can do this, and everybody's sitting there.
Since they've done our bonds, typically, the ones that do that follow along with it.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow.
I second that, three thousand.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Now, Ms. Dandy, that is three thousand, not three million. I think after two zeros, it becomes infinite, though, don't it?
Precision.
I like it. The period is, it's confusing.
It's opposite.
It's confusing, so. All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. Motion passes, so. Item 11, Ms. Oster. Additional business to be discussed?
Yes, discussion of and potential action to contract with Robert Hancock to serve out of county summons for surrounding counties.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Further discussion?
Yeah, what is this?
You know, the problem we've had being able to serve papers outside the county on nuisance properties and things such as that.
Okay.
We, we were not able to do that, and then a law came in that where we could, I think, June or July of last year, and, but because we didn't have a constable, District One, and we didn't have, and they were overloaded. We weren't able, they weren't able to, no one really wanted to try to take it on. So we, now we have, and he's gonna, he did a, set up a contract with us for what he would serve them outside the, and I, I mean, I got two or three right now that we've been, that's been there for, oh, I don't know, one's probably a couple of years. They just know that they're not in the county, so you can't get to them.
Are we gonna recoup our money?
Possibly. So when we have a nuisance piece of property that you guys refer up to Justice 4J, if the owner of the property is out of county, we gotta figure out a way to get them served. So we are contracting with one of our constables who can then take the justice court summons and go out of county and serve it on an individual under contract with us to reimburse him. The court can only allow $35 to do constable-level service of process, but the, the new law lets them contract privately with us, the board, to serve this. And so he's made a proposal to us to serve at $125 anything that's out of county.
Plus mileage.
Plus his mileage.
We're, we're gonna put a limitation on that, eh?
That's what the limitation is.
We don't want somebody going to Florida to serve some of this, do we?
If he wants to get it, do it for $125, I'm fine with it. I'm sure we will be, we'll have some saying where he, if he's gonna do it.
In this particular one, he did say for the 125-plus mileage that he would do it for the county's Hines, Madison, Scott, Smith, Simpson, and Capia. Anything outside of that, he would negotiate.
I mean, what is, what's happening? This, this, they do this, and the only way you're gonna get them is it, I mean, I got one that's two that are really bad.
So when he serves them, are they then bound to come? What happens if they don't?
Contempt. They can be found in contempt. They could be, potentially, they could be jailed. Make warrant for their arrest for failure to appear.
Will be the next step.
There's a very short table, Mr. President.
All right, so we got a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion?
I mean, I, I see we're, we've named one person that we're gonna do a contract with. Are the other constables not interested, or do we just wanna deal with one person?
Well, we, we can double-check with them to be sure, but my impression is they're not interested.
At one time, at one time, they weren't. In fact, they asked, let's wait till the election was over.
Yeah.
And so that's what we did, so. I mean, I'm fine with any of them doing it, but I'm just saying, they, at that time, they weren't interested.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. Item A passes. Anything on executive session, Ms. Oster?
Before that, we do have an addition business to be discussed. B is the renewal contract with vector control, vector disease control, for $220,000, our current rate for a year.
All right, so a motion added to agenda by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. Motion to approve by Mr. Morrow.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. Item B passes. He sneaks in the door on us, though. All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrow to add our right-of-way acquisition. Second by Mr. Bishop. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thanks for your time.
Hear your frustration.
Get us going. Tell me where we're at.
Yes, sir. Really quickly, this is the Gunter Road Reconstruction Project. We've got ten parcels that we've completed our evaluation services on, and we are asking the board to approve our estimates and establish just compensation for these ten parcels. These are new parcels. There's one parcel that's not on this list that is a revaluation. We had to, there was a slight change in the right-of-way take area. We got a new plat, new legal description, updated title, and it, the, the value on that property changed from $7,500 to $9,500. It is not on this summary list, but it is included in our Establishment of Just Compensation offer packet that we'll get you to sign. We do have the document to sign. We just, it's just not included in this list.
Mr. Parker's fault, but I have to redo that legal description?
No, no, they actually did the county a favor and changed the, changed the take area.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Thank you, Mr. Parker.
I make a motion to approve.
All right, so a motion by Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign.
Thank y'all very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else additional business?
Just executive session personnel.
All right, so a motion discussion need for executive session by Mr. Morrow. Second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. All right, there we are.
Do we have an executive session?
Yes.
I was not paying attention.
What are you doing?
Hey, Renee. So is he gonna do that? I just don't, we fix him to pay after those or something and not get anything out of it, you know?
Hey, Duane, couldn't we work something different? I mean, maybe we need to structure something where they, they'd have to be responsible for recouping that money.
Well, he said that they were already more efficient then. I think we need to have some way of.
The way we might do it.
Some way of notifying our court clerk where this one was done through a contract so that we could make sure the judge adds on the fee, or at least. Recoup our costs.
That way, they may not wanna run that down.
All right, Mr. Slay. Can we just move?
Thank you, word. We gotta get in executive.
Gotta be good. Got through there. They just gotta go real fast. If you don't, they take them down. They take them down, I think we're done.
All right, Mr. Morrow. So a motion going executive session, Mr. Morrow, second by Mr. Morrison. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, with the like sign. Executive session, Mr. Slay's gonna.